We'll call to order the special meeting of October 23rd, 2012 of the Grant County Commissioners. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, in the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all. To this flag, the state of Mexico, as the symbol of our friendship, among other united cultures.
Today, we're going to start with a special meeting, so first thing we need to do is approve the special meeting agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the special meeting agenda. All those in favor, signal five to say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We need to approve or disapprove the sole community provider additional supplemental funds in the amount of $283,253.98 for Gila Regional Medical Center. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Chairman.
I mean, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, at the last meeting, we had a supplemental payment that the commission had approved, and we sent that up, and we had talked about it at that time. As the sole community provider comes, funds come into the state, they try and divide them up between all the sole community hospitals, the provider hospitals. Some of the hospitals can't attain the match to get their whole amount, and so then what the state does is they take a look back, and if somebody hasn't been allocated the full amount that they're available by the federal guidelines, then they start reallocating to those hospitals that were able to meet their matches. So that's what's happened the last two weeks, is either regional got a piece before, and now there's come back, and there's been some more that don't have it, that aren't able to meet their matches. So either regional's been awarded an additional $924,458.16, which would require a match of $283,253.98. Because they're a public institution owned by Grant County, they've already given us that match funds, and so we have those funds in our accounts, ready to cut the check if the commission approves this, to send it back up. As you see, the later, the letter states that we have to test later, have to send an attestation letter by the end of the week of October 19th. Either regional has talked with them, and it's actually, they want the information by tomorrow. That's why we have the special meeting today, because we let them know, they sent it late, as you see, October 17th, we didn't have time to call a special meeting of the commission by the 19th, and so we told them, and they were okay with it, and what we'll do is send it out today overnight to them if the commission approves, so they'll receive it tomorrow, and they're fine with that deadline. So either region can receive this funding.
Chairman, cast now to approve the sole community provider additional supplemental funds.
May I second? The motion and a second to approve the supplemental funds for the community provider. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five to say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So at this time, I'll accept a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
So move.
Second. All those in favor, signal five to say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Call to order the work session of October 23rd. The purpose of the work session is to inform Grant County Board of Commissioners of agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting, and for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate with Commissioners in regards to matters in their respective departments. In accordance with the Grant County Resolution Number 12-01, we welcome the public to attend work sessions, but no public input will be permitted at this meeting. So at this time, we'll review the October 25th regular meeting agenda. John.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, under financial reports, we have the expenditure report dated October 22nd, 2012. I think you'll be pleased that it's only $348,935.20.
Wow, that's a treat.
We've had a meeting within, less than a month, but usually we were out of a month, and this includes only one payroll, instead of the other usually include a couple payrolls, that's why they're larger. So this is kind of a typical spending. We typically spend about $700,000 a month, so this is a two-week period, so it's right on, there's no unusual expenditures in it. You will see on the next one, we'll have these large checks, that large check from the sole community provider piece, for $200,000. Under new business, the first item is the approve or disapprove the appointment of three members to the Grant County Food Policy Council. They're looking for their new members. The first is Sonny McFerrin, retired with the marketing director for either regional medical center. Ken Barr, from the Black Hawk Garden, and John Song, from small, he's a small grower in the Members Valley. So this will be their, to bring their council up to full. The, also what they've given us is, the group has started looking at, trying to redo their bylaws. They've given us kind of a draft of what they want. Dave has kind of glanced over it, and he and I have talked about, there's some things in there that he and I really need to sit down and look at, because they, one, they changed their requirement, but they didn't change the requirement of their quorum, and so they were trying to have a quorum with like five people, but their board required them to have nine, I think it was, to have a quorum, because a quorum needs to be one more than half. And so there's little things like that, they're trying to change, they talked about wanting to change the structure of, it's really hard for the public entities to always be there, because we're always in so many other boards and meetings, and so they want to try and take out the requirement out of the bylaws, that there has to be so many public agencies represented on the board, and so they can try and fill those seats with other members, so it's easier to get a quorum. Because when we get into legislative time, we all know it's hard to get any of us, because we're running to Santa Fe and back and forth, and when we get a call that we need to go testify, not that the Food Policy Council isn't an important group, that they're doing good work, is we usually take off and go to testify, and everything gets stopped, it doesn't matter what the meetings are. And it's hard for them to comprehend that, as people that aren't involved in the government aspect, that we just leave, but we have no choice, and we start canceling meetings, and so they're trying to get away from that.
I met with Alicia Edwards, one of the chairman, one of the co-chairmen of the food council, and they want to come up with a more workable type of bylaws, as far as members go on their board, and what they've been doing has not been working all that well, so they're trying to make some, I think some really good positive improvements to that.
Yeah, and so Dave and I just have to meet on those, and those will be future, they've given them to us, but we held off, we're going to have to look at them for future meetings. The next item is, we've had a request from the Village of Santa Clara from the Chief of Police. The letters come from their clerk and treasurer, Mrs. Romo. At the old jail, when we moved out, we left the industrial washing machine we have, because at the new, part of the construction of the new jail, there's new washing machines, larger, better designed for what we're doing, because we were burning through washing machines very rapidly. So he's made a request that if there's no use for that with Grant County, if we could donate that to the Village of Santa Clara for the police department, so they can use it to wash some of the towels they use for washing their cars, some of the jumpsuits they use when they're out on differently, just items for the police department to use in the village, to help them offset some of their costs of having to go out and have all this stuff laundered all the time, or having guys take them home and doing it personally in their personal laundry, their personal washing dryer. So that's been a request, and as far as I know right now, we have no use for that machine, because like I said, it was a, it's a smaller, not really designed, it's an industrial, but it's not designed for the amount of work we put on it at the detention center, and so I don't think it's going to hurt to transfer it over. The dryer that was there is of no use anymore, and it kind of burned up as we were leaving the facility, it's just we're real hard, and you've got 80 inmates, and you're continually washing clothes and blankets, and many different people are using the machine, it's hard to keep up service, so that's one that we're not using anymore, we've left it, and if there's no issues, they would like to have it transferred to them. It doesn't violate any laws, because they're a government entity, for us to transfer it over to them and let them use it. The next is contracts and agreements, it's an agreement with Homeland Security. Homeland Security is the group that the emergency manager Gilbert Hilton works with, he's received a grant for $50,000, $50,665, and it's to, he's buying some radios, he's buying $24,000 worth of mobile radios, he's doing $6,665 worth of fire incident response support training, and he's doing $20,000 for radio cash sustain, to try and build his cash of radios that he has here for the emergency operations center, so that in the event of an emergency, he's already got radios programmed with all the frequencies we need, and set up, charged, and ready to go, so he can just start distributing them to people as they come in to work that emergency. It's no cost to the county, this is federal dollars that come down through the state Homeland Security Office that the emergency managers all report to.
So does he supply radios to the other party?
He works with them to help them get radios, a lot of them buy their radios through, through the, through their fire funds, but Gilbert will work with them, and some of them can't afford them, he's bought radios for them, he's bought, helped to get radios for other law enforcement agencies. He has a cash right now of about five or six radios, but as we switch to narrowbanding, the radios we used to have are going to be no good, so he's trying to build a bigger cache, they're trying to get some of these King radios, or what the Forest Service uses, that can be programmed really quickly, and you can take one and clone it into another radio in the field, so you get all the frequencies, because the Forest Service assigns special frequencies every time there's a forest fire, that are just for use for that forest fire, so that's what he tries to do with it. He helps them get things, he helps them with their repeaters, the larger repeaters, trying to replace those repeaters for them, so that they don't have those big costs, because those are usually those $20,000 items.
Sounds good.
The next item is approve/disapprove an employment contract for county attorney with Abigail Robinson. Mrs. Robinson was the former county attorney, she left about, well, I think it was in July, so a few months ago. She's currently finishing up at the other job she was at, her last day at least, 26th of October, and she's put in her resume, commissions have reviewed it, and this is the same contract that she had when she left Grant County, there's no increase, no change in the benefits, no change in anything, it's just a continuation of the contract that she was under at that point in time. And so that's what this is, is to put in front of the commission to approve her being the in-house county attorney again for Grant County, this should be full-time.
And I just wanted to make a comment about Dave, Dave, you've done a great job as our interim attorney.
And this doesn't make, yeah, and bringing Abby in, what we talked about is, I've talked with a couple of commissioners, all of us, I think I've talked with all of you individually, is that even though we have an in-house, we talked about that there's still a need for help outside, there's some specialty things, so just because we're hiring an in-house doesn't mean that we might not continue to do work with Dave. Dave and I have not sat down and talked about it, and neither has he with the commission that I know of, but there's still opportunities for us to work with Dave. Speaking with Mrs. Robinson, she agrees that there's opportunities for us to continue to work with Dave, that together we would have a really strong team if we had an inside and an outside, that on special things such as possibly the roads, roadless rules, we don't have time for an in-house attorney to do all the county business, plus look at those items, so that might be an opportunity for us to work with Dave and have him attack things that he's a bulldog on.
And I think what we also need to let people know is that our in-house attorney does a lot of everyday jobs for the county, including helping you with research, you know, so I think that definitely has to be mentioned. I think Dave, Mr. Gorman, has done a really good job for us, and I really wish to keep him on and use him for these big items, so hopefully that's something that we can both approve on and move on with it. We appreciate it.
Yeah, there's, seems like more opportunities coming up every day. You turn on the, turn on the news that we, I mean, and that's one thing, is, and the county attorney for public, because of what's happened lately, and you know, and comments that have been made about Dave's position with us, is the county attorney is the attorney for the commission and the county, the commission, the manager, and they work with the elected officials, they're not the county attorneys for all the residents of Grant County. The county attorney's clients are in-house here, not everybody, and so there was comments made about it being a conflict of interest for him to represent the commission, because he's supposed to represent the public, and that's not what the county attorney's position is, that's what the public defender does, and that's what outside legal aid does, they represent the public. Dave's position and Abby's position is, they're here for the county, for Grant County, we are their client, and so that's why they take the positions that they take, they don't, it's not that they're against the public, it's that their client is Grant County government.
Okay. Just a couple things on this contract. The last time Abby was here, I was very happy with Abby's work, however, I was never happy with this contract. I think it needs a couple things added.
Okay.
I don't agree with ever having a contract with somebody that the only time that there's a termination, that you pay them, whether it was termination with cause or without. I think if you terminate somebody with cause, that the severance should be less or none. I mean, I'm not anticipating that to be a case, I think that every contract with professionals should have some moral clause in it, and this one has none.
And I think the intent of is, the intent of the termination is termination without cause.
And it doesn't bring up why. Anywhere in here, so I think those are things that have to be addressed on professional contracts with employees.
Yeah, because mine, I know, has that if I'm terminated with cause, there's no recourse for me as a contracted employee.
That's a couple things, I didn't know if you'd reviewed this, Dave, or not.
Dave hasn't seen that.
So.
This was reviewed by the association last time.
I know that we probably need to get on that fairly quickly, because I'm sure Mrs. Robinson will want to review her own contract prior to approval or disapproval on Thursday, so those are a couple things that I would like to see added, and when, as we proceed in the future with contracts for employees, those need to be in there. Anything else?
I agree.
No, I agree.
Yeah, and this was the contract we got from the Association of Counties, and so we just pulled it up and changed the dates, but we can add that, because I know in my contract, it states that I am a contracted employee, and the employee handbook doesn't apply to me, that if I'm terminated, I don't have to recourse steps through the employee handbook for progressive discipline or things like that, so it does state those things.
And we'll be able to have that done by Tuesday?
Yes. Yeah, Dave and I can speak after this meeting, it's, I've got the document electronic.
Okay, and I guess in closing on that, is I too have been very happy with your work, Dave, and I hope that you do see your way to help us with special projects and such as, as we go along, because I know that you and Abby get along well, so I hope that happens. Okay, go ahead, John.
The next item is resolution, approve/disapprove resolution Number R1243, salary increase for chief deputies and undersheriff to 95% of elected official salaries. This is a letter that was given to the Commissioners, signed by the four elected officials, the treasurer, the assessor, the clerk, and the sheriff, requesting an increase of the chief deputy salaries. This is done, the commission, gosh, it's been a year ago, two years ago, it was before you all came in, so almost two years ago, the commission increased the salaries of the elected officials, but at that time chose not to increase the salaries of the chief deputies, and so that's what this is, it's asking the commission that.
Well, I'd like to mention that Kurozu, Mr. Zamari, our county clerk, he doesn't have a chief deputy, he's chosen not to, and pretty much take on the work on, you know, himself, and I know he's got a great group of girls in there helping him out, but I mean, he's saved the county a lot of money within these last four years, so he's the only one that doesn't have a chief deputy at this point, right?
Here's to me, the only one here is you, Alfred.
Yeah, my question is, so hear me, everybody that signed this letter is in agreement, along with the sheriff, Roberts, and Mr. Villa, they're not here, but so I take it that everybody that signed this letter is in support of.
Yeah, and we're trying to end up putting these letters together, and asking if they agreed and sign it, they get. You know, in the last months, and I thank Mr. Gorman and you and Mr. Miller for meeting with us, because we met twice, actually, Commissioner Miller asked us to get the job descriptions to reach chief deputy, which we did, and when we reviewed it with you, you didn't realize how extensive the positions were in these departments. You know, we relied, as you were saying a few minutes ago, you know, you can rely on Mr. Gorman to help Abby, we rely on our chief deputies to help us, I mean, it's very important. You know, because if we're not there, they're there, or we're both together, you know, working, you know, for our office, you know? You know, our offices only have two, I have two other employees in my office, and you guys know how busy that gets during tax season, Robert with his, and NOBs with the assessor's office, and then in the sheriff's office, I'm sure they have, you know, so it's very important, you know, in the past years, and as you saw, there you saw the resolution that was passed back in, I believe, it's like, October, April, excuse me, April 13th of 2006, when the new chief deputies came in, or new elected officials, the chief deputies went up to the 95%. So since then, there has not been an increase for these chief deputies, which I believe that very well deserved. So, you know, we met last year, a year before, when the elected officials wanted theirs, you know, we all got together, talked to each commission individually, and, you know, stated our cases, and, you know, we thank you that you approved that, and we did, all we're doing is just trying to do it for our chief deputies now. You know, we spoke with John that day, you know, we said we'll implement this, and then we will work on the chief deputies. Well, it's already gone over a year, and nothing's ever happened, and we've tried talking, we've visited with each, you know, both of you Commissioners, gave you, gave you what you guys asked of us, moved you again, went over it again, you know, so, you know, we just feel that, you know, our chief deputies, undersheriff, you know, we deserve, I mean, they deserve their, you know, their increases. Some of the positions got switched to one office, you know, that person got an increase, but just because of the position, that was it, you know, the position, she didn't get any more than what, you know, what was deserved on that, which, you know, she, I mean, I'm not speaking for the assessor, but, you know, I think this paperwork just speaks for itself, you know, I don't, whatever you, if you have any questions, I mean.
I appreciate you being there to talk to your face. I hope that Mr. Villa and Sheriff, and whoever would be here on Thursday to also express their feelings, I was always proud that they went for it.
Well, I know Mr. Villa is out in the field, talking with some homeowners on their value, and I believe the sheriff and the undersheriff are attending a training in Albuquerque on, tomorrow and Thursday?
Yes.
So they will not be here Thursday, because they'll be out at a sheriff's training.
And when I met with the elected, the only thing that was of concern to me was during conferences, workshops, et cetera, I would like to see either the deputy or the elected official be in the office, not both of you out at the same time, and we talked about that in detail.
It's all my things like mine, I mean, why chief deputy gets involved in the affairs?
Right, I understand that.
And what we're trying to do, like, you see what's going on with our affiliate right now, with DFA and TRD, you know, we're all bandied together to try and get things done. You know, our office is running very well, I mean, I have no doubt if both of us are gone, that our other employees can pick up the slack where we need, and we're only a phone call away.
Right.
And, you know, if, you know, I'm speaking for me now, because we have a new trainer coming in, I mean, whatever he decides is, you know, that's his decision, but, you know, we're not just out there and not doing anything without our office.
And that was.
You know, we are out there working for the county, we're working out there for the state, to make our affiliate, to make things better for the county. There's some big issues out there, mobile homes, that I've been trying to do for years and years, you know, Steve and I have been working on that. This issue right now with TRD, you know, we're out there calling people, trying to collect money, and I tell you right now, with the beginning of this juncture right now, we collect $96,000 of the moving property taxes that haven't been touched in three quarters. You know, so I, you know, we've done $18,000 or more of the movement than we have current taxes for just this month. You know, and it's not just, people may think we just sit there and not do nothing, collect taxes or whatever, our investments have increased, we've made money on our investments, you know, which both of us work together. You know, I'm just speaking from my office, I mean, the others aren't here to speak to them, and Rob doesn't have them, but, you know, I, you know, I really believe that the chief deputy deserves what we presented to you.
And once again, all I was talking about was the need of maybe not having both of you out all the time, not just in your office, Alfred, and everybody's office.
I have a new trainer coming in, and that's.
And in my office.
Yeah, and I mean, in my office, we both go, because we get involved, yeah, I don't speak for the other offices, so, you know, when Steve comes in, that's, that's whatever he wants to do.
Again, thank you for taking your case.
And I often feel, I'd like to just mention that as elected officials. You're on the clock 24 hours, I mean, you get calls at home, you walk into Walmart, you get calls, and you get stopped, and you're talking business there, you're talking shop, I mean, you can go eat lunch, and constantly people are coming and talking to you about county business, which is fine, that's what we're here for. You know, so I really, I really think that these elected officials, when they got that raise, really do deserve that. As far as the chief deputy positions, I really feel that everyone needs to keep up with inflation, and we always need to try and do that for our people. Now, I don't think that they should be making more than our directors, though, because our directors are kind of like us elected officials, everywhere they go, they're being approached and talked to and asked questions, and they don't, they're, they're pretty much a salary position that has a 24-hour job. Now, and they're also responsible for their, for their actual area of business throughout the county. So I would like to see some kind of raise for me, even if it's not now, maybe for the next budget, we can start looking at that pretty heavily, and hopefully if our budget stays healthy the way it has been, you know, we can work on something for our directors also. But at this point, I think we really need a review where that money would come from if, or if we do have it, if we decided to do this.
Certainly, it's not budgeted for, so it would have to come out of their budget.
If you want to, last page that you're, but again, if you look at your directors, they're making well more than what the chief deputies are making. You have, you have, you gave, on the last few pages of that I gave you, if you look at your directors, they're making well more than what the chief deputies are making. Actually, some are making more than the elected officials. It should be on your first page.
Oh, God, man, it makes too much.
About two-thirds of what the one does every month. So it's all, and that's one thing that's been brought up, is, you know, I've talked with my directors, because there's directors that make, don't make as much money as directors in other places.
Well, in all seriousness.
Kind of relative to where we are, is because in Luna County, the county manager makes $120,000, and I have no aspirations to make that much money, I've never asked for that, I haven't received a raise in over five years.
Well, in all seriousness, we do need to keep up with inflation, we need to try and do our best to do so anyways, if it's feasible.
Well, and that's why we paid last year, or I guess it was a couple years ago, because I'm getting ready to negotiate the union contract again, we did 100% of the benefits for our employees, because without giving them a raise, that was giving them a raise in their take-home money, and so it was making up for us not giving them actual raise in their salary, is we started paying 100% of the benefits, and we did that for the elected officials, I think it was two years prior to that, we did it for all the elected.
I think it was two years prior to that, we did it for all the electeds and chief deputies, got their benefits paid at 100%, because at that time, they were limited by the salary and the benefit is not salary. So we were able to give them more money without increasing their salary and violating the resolution, because the raise hadn't been given to the elected officials yet, so they were kind of capped at that 95%. So we did that 100% increase that gave them more money take-home wise, without increasing their salary. That was done, I believe it was four years ago, three or four years ago, it was prior to doing it for the employees, we did it a year or two prior to the employees getting it, and now we do it for all the employees. And that's what it was for, when we negotiated with the union, because we've been under a wage freeze through the commission, has done a resolution, the past commission did a resolution to freeze wages. We haven't given any raises for four years to any of the employees, so we did that insurance deal to try and get them a little something to help with the cost of gas and food.
And in essence, that was actually a pretty healthy raise for most employees.
The, yeah, if you were a family, if you took the family plan, Blue Cross Blue Shield, it was about $400 a month is what you got, because you're not paying your portion of the premium anyone. And then it varied, you know, if you're a single person, it's probably closer to $200 to $300 a month, because the premium was so much lower, and we were paying 80% of it already. But the Blue Cross is about $1,500 a month is what it costs us, so.
And again, Alfred, I appreciate each one of you putting in or giving us the duties and responsibilities of each deputy. There's quite a few chores involved with each of the deputies, so thank you. Anything for you? Okay. John?
The next item is bids, approved, disapproved bid 12-05 Ford, all-wheel-drive Ford door utility vehicle. We spoke about this with the commission in the past. We've gone out for bid, looking at replacing some vehicles. The senior services department has got appropriation from the state for six. Terry, did you find out yet? It's either five or six. Five or six. They've given Terry enough money to buy about 20, but they've limited him to five or six, and he's trying to figure it out. Because they gave him about $120,000 and said, "Buy three vehicles with it."
Yeah, they had $78 on that one.
Sold. And as you see, the prices of the vehicles, they're about $23,000 to $25,000, so he can buy quite a few vehicles, more than three, with $120,000. And then he has another appropriation with about $80,000 in it, that they said he could buy two out of. So he's trying to work a deal out with them, to where they'll let him buy six vehicles, a third out of that other one, because he has plenty of money in those appropriations, and will still have money left over to do some other things if they'll let it. They're starting to get a little stricter on making changes. So we went out locally, instead of going off the state price agreement.
Yeah.
We received three bids, we've got a Lolly Ford, which is the Ford dealer right across the street, a Bob Turner Ford, and Monette Ford out of Socorro. You have the bids as they were opened, when Rob was present, you also have the tally sheet on the back for all the different vendors. The one thing we were trying to do is see, I believe the state price agreement, I'll have those numbers for you, it's about $24,500 to buy a Ford Explorer on the state price As you see by this, Lolly came in at $25,000 to buy across the street. So it would be able to let us start spending our money locally. We did this as a price agreement bid, so that other agencies can piggyback off of it, so basically, anyone in the state of New Mexico that's a public agency could come buy a vehicle, if it's awarded to Lolly Ford, they could buy it from Lolly, Monette, any of these. And it also doesn't bind us to use this agreement if we wish to go off the state price agreement, because they change that, and that becomes cheaper as they're bidding it. So this is what we did, we'll have a recommendation for you on who to award to on Thursday. We also have the ability, as we put out the bid, to award to multiple vendors. And the reason why we were looking at multiple vendors is, so in the cases, if we go, say it's Lolly, and you go to Lolly, and they say they can't provide us a vehicle, it's going to take too long, because they have so many other vehicles in order, and so they're backed up, and it's going to take six to eight months, we could call the second vendor we awarded to, and if they have something available, then we could go get it from them, because they're all very close in price, as you see. The lowest apparent bidder on the tally sheet on the front is Monette, but when you add in the cost of delivering the vehicles to Silver City, Monette becomes second, and Lolly becomes the lowest. And we did Ford Escapes and Ford Explorers. And the Escapes have that new I-6 engine in, or I-4 engine in them, that is the four-cylinder super-fuel economy engine, so.
No, these will be 2012 or 2013?
They'll be 2013.
Well, all three of the Escapes have different engines.
Yes, they all bid different engines. And that was one thing, too, is why we looked at possibility of awarding multiple, is Lolly bid an I-1.6-liter engine, which doesn't have a lot of horsepower to it, but would be a good vehicle if you're running around locally or something like that, and you're not taking it on long trips a lot. Monette bid the 2.0 I-4 engine, which has 250 horsepower. And so it's a more powerful engine that you can travel on highways with. And then the 2.5-liter engine that was bid by Bob Turner, Jacob and I looked at it, and on Ford's website, it says you cannot get a 4x4 with that 2.5-liter engine. And that 2.5-liter engine doesn't have as much horsepower as the 1.6-liter EcoBoost engine, it's actually a smaller, less powerful engine.
What do you mean, the 2.0 EcoBoost engine?
No, the 2.
The 1.6?
It's a 1.6, too, yeah. It's a very low-powered engine on Ford's website. We went out to Ford's website to look at it, so that we could clarify that. And the 2.0-liter EcoBoost engine is the most powerful, and then the 1.6 and the 2.5 are about close to the same, because the 1.6 is a boosted engine, that EcoBoost, and the 2.5 is not, it's just a regular engine, and so it's, it's not a very powerful engine. Terry, on your vehicles, do you need four-wheel drive?
That's what we requested because of, for snow, and because we're starting to deliver further out, and so a lot of it is dirt roads, and so we're having a hard time getting into their property, so, so I think it'll help us on the home-delivered part in the winter months.
And what about the engine? Have you talked?
The engine doesn't necessarily have to be, V6 is fine, I mean, we're, we normally don't ever use our vehicles outside of the county, so, so we're looking at maybe 10 to 15-mile radius every day.
Okay, thank you, Terry.
No, John, did you look at my list?
Um, we did the, the EcoBoost engines, both the 1.6 and the 2.0, were close to 30 miles on the highway, and they were low 20s in the city on the website. The 2.5-liter engine wasn't as good a mileage, and like I said, you can't get it in the four-wheel drive, I mean, it has specified we want a four-wheel drive. On the Ford Explorer V6, I didn't look at those on the website, but on the state price agreement, it says that the Explorers are getting 24 miles to the gallon.
Because that's the EcoBoost, right, the 3.5?
It's the V6, the smaller V6 engine that they've come out with.
Yeah, I think that's.
I don't know if they call it the EcoBoost, but it's the smaller, the new V6 that gets the better gas mileage. And they were on the, like I said, on the state price agreements website, when they responded with the same engine, it was 24 miles to gallon is what they said they get. They said they get the same mileage as the V6 Escapes on the state's engine. So everything's at mid-20s range or higher, not based on the engine.
Because I know we had to request it and make sure it's something that gets better than 20.
Yeah, and so these all do, all these vehicles do. And like I said, the Explorers are a larger vehicle, of course, they fit, they fit a little more engine.
That was my other question for Terry, is how much, how many cubic feet do you need when you're delivering?
For the Silver, that's the one that we require the most, because we're doing about, we need pretty much the size of a van.
And that's what it is.
These are going to be the size of a van.
Well, but the seats will go down, so that'll give us what we can put in the heating units and everything in there.
And I, I mean, we own one Escape, but they've changed the style, and Captain Flam actually purchased one personally, and we got to take a look at it one day, and they're actually really nice. They changed them to be a very nice vehicle, the Escape.
Well, driving that Escape to reserve, that was a really comfortable vehicle, very good gas mileage, I mean, it's pretty much all you need.
They've made a lot of changes to them from ours compared to the newer models, because you wouldn't even notice, his wife came up in his, and I didn't even realize it was the same vehicle, because the body style's changed dramatically. They're really different, and I don't know if they're changing more for 2013. Do I believe yours is a 12? Oh, is it a 13? So that's, I guess, the 13 style. So they're more sloped, they more look like a, I guess like a Lexus, now they have that sloping style, like the Acuras and the Lexuses and stuff. But they're both very nice vehicles, very roomy inside, the Escape's roomy. We were just looking at the Explorers for, for some people that travel more, it would give them more room, legroom and stuff in the back, if you're taking more people to travel in them. And we were looking at five or six for Terry. The assessor's office was wanting two under their reappraisal fees for going out in the field, so they could get rid of some of the older vehicles they have. And then the road department, Mr. Moore's vehicle, the truck he has was the hand-me-down truck from Anthony when he was the superintendent, and he's got, getting closer to, I think, 200,000 miles on his truck, so his truck's needing to be replaced. We thought of replacing it with one of these SUVs, because he doesn't haul anything in the bed of his truck, so it'll get better gas mileage than a four-wheel-drive truck.
Except for that, you.
No, he doesn't put them in his truck. He won't put them in his Escape. And so we're looking at that as possibly our purchases going forward. We've got some other departments that are needing trucks. Depending on how they look and work out, the sheriff's office is also in need of a vehicle that they might want to try out, one of these types of small SUVs, because the vehicle that Captain Flam is driving is 10, 11 years old?
04.
So getting close to 10 years old, it was the former captain's, it's one of the older vehicles in the fleet. And so the vehicles the sheriff had been getting, that he speaks to you about, are Stone Garden, and they're to be used on the Stone Garden grants on the border. So we're looking at, we need to purchase out of a general fund, something to replace the undersheriff's vehicle, because it's more of a patrol vehicle in town and things like, and that nature, and not being used down on Stone Garden. And so it would violate those grants if we bought him something, or he would have to give it up to officers to take down and drive on the border, right? So we're going to have to do something out of our budget to replace his vehicle, because it's starting to cost us more to repair than it is worth. It's an old Impala, it's not worth a lot.
Well, don't be missing with our surplus.
Yeah, no, and we have money in the vehicle replacement fund, we budgeted some funds in there to replace some vehicles. So this isn't unbudgeted expenditures, and I think everybody can attest, I'm kind of cheap when it comes to vehicles, and so they've all been begging for these about three or four years, and so Justin's the worst one.
You've got about 10 more years.
So Justin, Justin's going to get Earl's hand-me-down.
There you go. I get to share some.
When a big family.
So we're going to give Justin Earl's old truck, and, you know, get him something new. So, but, no, we're working, Justin just has the worst luck, every time I try and buy him a vehicle, there's a tsunami, or the plant blows up, or something happens and they can't get a vehicle. We've tried to buy him a truck about five times, and something has happened, that we just can't buy it.
I think Terry had it.
I just had to, when the vehicles that we're proposing to buy, they, those were requested back in the 2010 and 2011, and so at that time, what was requested was, I think, like one SUV and vans. At that time, they used the vans for, because we used to transport almost, almost everybody to our centers or to doctors. We kind of, in the last year and a half or so, we changed that, so we're very, we transfer very limited people. Corte Caminos does most of our transports. So we're just looking for, you know, better fuel, because I think right now, we're getting maybe 14 miles per gallon on ours. Our gas bill is about 1,400 every, every month. So we're looking to, we basically need the four-wheel drives for home-delivered meals. There's a couple of centers that transport one or two people, and they could do that on any, really any vehicle that we would purchase. So right now, I'm working with Captain Lolly in Santa Fe, to see if they'll allow us to change what we had requested back then to, you know, what we need now. So that's an ongoing thing. Right now, we're, we can probably purchase three of them, without a problem. The other two or three, we'll have to see what they say.
No, that's it on that. As you said, we'll have a recommendation letter for you on Thursday. But that's, we tried to meet all the criteria that the commission spoke about on gas mileage and looking at use of the vehicles, so that we're better fitting. And the reason why we did Ford as well is, we're trying to uniform the fleet into one type of vehicle, so that it's easier on the road department, fleet maintenance, that we're only buying one type of software, and getting our mechanics certified in one type of vehicle, instead of their continually changing the vehicles they work on. So we're trying to uniform the fleet as a fleet of Ford vehicles. And at the time, Ford was the only dealer in town when we originally started looking at that, and so we were trying to also do that, so that warranty work is easier to take care of locally. The next item is the indigent claims, dated October 17. There are 1,179 claims for $685,176.15. All of them are in the sole community provider piece, and they're from September. And that is it. I think, oh, there's one item I needed to add to the agenda, the, I met with the director of the bus system yesterday, and they're going to provide us today the budget for this next fiscal year, the grant that just started on October 1st, and so we're going to bring that to the commission for approval. So they've been working on that with Linda, and should get it to her today, so we're going to add that to the agenda for the commission to approve their operating budget for the bus systems, the administrative budget piece.
So how's that working now? Is the R T D still functioning?
And that's, yeah, there's, and that's one thing Commissioner Ramos and I have talked about, we've kind of explained it to the R T D a few times, I don't know, Commissioner Ramos and I will have to sit down and come up with a plan on how we do it. Really what happened is, when we took back over the buses, the R T D became an advisory board. There's some that understand that, and there's some that continue to think they run it, and so we're having a hard time making them realize that this commission is responsible for the functions of the bus services and the changes to the bus services. They can make recommendations as the Southwest R T D to the commission, which Commissioner Ramos sits on the board as a member, and you can bring them back to the commission if there wish to be changes, but they can't make changes, this commission makes the decision. So if you don't like the way the budget's structured, you can change that. You're going to approve the bus purchases, you have to approve the agreements. They've become a department back under Grant County again, like it used to be in the past. And so the Southwest R T D, in one conversation Commissioner Ramos and I had with Mr. Maronis, who's the chairman, is, they've become more of a whole, looking at transportation as a whole, so looking at the essential air service, and the need for where should the flights go, and things to bring, to put the tri-county area best on the map. The buses, is there any taxi service? is there any taxi services, what about rail coming in? Those are the types of things. So they'll function on transportation as a whole, the highways, you know, working on getting the highways improved and supporting that. And so it becomes more advisory on all those issues, trying to get the public's voice heard on those issues. And so Kim, as the director, then almost becomes like Tracy Bern said is from the call. She would go and give a report to the RTD, just informing them on how are the buses going, how's this? And then what I explained to them when they gave it back to us, and Rick McInturf understands from Demming, is if the RTD came forward and said, you know what, we've got one route to Columbus, but we would now like to run two routes to Columbus, then as the bus provider, Grant County would then present back a cost to the Southwest RTD and say, okay, to do that, it's gonna cost X number of dollars. And so if the partners of the Southwest RTD wish to come up with those funds to have that bus service run, then that bus service runs. If not, then this commission would decide whether or not they would want to put in the money to run that bus service outside of Grant County, say. If it was that case, and you could say, sorry, no, we're not gonna provide that, but if you wish to have some money, you can bring some more money to the game. Citizens of Grant County shouldn't fund something in Luna County and something in Hidalgo County.
During our last meeting, they did request a simple audit, see if we can give them permission to go ahead and do that. And I think that's best right now.
And we'll look at that.
You know, we, you know, just took over, we need to figure out what we're at.
Yeah, and Linda's been working on putting the numbers together, and we're looking with someone to have them take a look at it and outside. Just because it's been, you know, you're talking a couple of years since we've done it, just to get where it all is.
So it's gonna be run as a full department of Grant County?
Yes, that's currently how it is right now, is it's a department under Grant County. And so Kim is one of the directors that reports to me.
Then I feel as though that probably, starting at the next work session, that we have department heads, that she should be here.
Yes.
I totally agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, and she was, like I said, she was in my office yesterday, she spoke with the chairman and I about, we've got the ability to purchase some buses under a state of good repair. And so we were talking about the buses they've purchased in the past, and kind of relying on the chairman's knowledge as a bus contractor for his whole life, really, I guess, he had no choice when you're younger.
How long have you been asleep?
Started sleeping? And so we, so we can try and get better buses that'll have better reliability, serviceability, be better for the citizens in the long run, help reduce costs of the RTD.
Well, I'd really like to see you look at all the positions, reorganize if we need to. I think there's some areas that I think we both agree on, that we really need to work on. So I think that really needs to take top priority in that area, and see if we need to reorganize or switch job duties or what have you.
Yeah, and one thing we spoke about for the last few years, even as the RTD spoke of it, is once we get the new bus terminal built on the side of the conference center, then we're going to consolidate and look at a whole reorganization of that system. And even the RTD was, that you've got a director and assistant director that are in Demming, and you've got some staff up here, and so it's split up, and that we're trying to consolidate it into one, and maybe have.
Are you currently running bus terminals in Lordsburg, Demming and Silver?
Not in Lordsburg, there's not one, they just make stops, it's more of a demand type of service.
And we're funded from the state for those routes?
We get our normal grant funding, the 5311 and the 53, I think it's 15. It's probably gonna be 16, but I'm gonna say 15. So those are the two federal grants that come in. One manages the administrative piece of the bus services, the other one manages the operations piece of the bus services. Both of those grants require cash match. So the cash match is made up by advertising, by contracts with people to run specific routes, like the route between here and Lordsburg is, has always been funded by Hidalgo Medical Services, because they run some of their tests on it and things back and forth on it, so they've funded that route historically. And then it's also made up by the contributions by the entities that are part of the Southwest RTD.
And that is who?
Demming and Luna County provide $60,000 each a year. Silver City, Grant County, provide $30,000 each a year. And then Lordsburg and Hidalgo, I believe, provide 10 each. And then Columbus has never paid, because they're part of, Demming and Lordsburg fund the Columbus route as part of their 120 combined. So there's, those are the partners of the JPA, those are the partners that fund it.
And Luna's continuing to pay their 60?
Yes, Luna pays, they actually have just, when they were in my office, they've just sent out the invoices to the entities, the outside entities. Grant County, what we do is automatically on October 1st, we transfer $30,000 from our general fund into the buses to cover our.
And we use that 200,000 for a match?
That's part of the cash match that's required on the grants. Yes, the cash match is larger than the 200,000 overall, but that is a part of, that, the advertising and the contracts, contract revenue.
Rather than get down in the weeds today with that, I guess we do need to get the budget and get to looking at it.
And that'll be on Thursday?
Yeah, they're supposed to bring in today, they were going back to finish up the last pieces, last line items for Linda, and then they were gonna get it to Randy today, and so we'll add that to the agenda for your approval on Thursday, so that they can send it to the state, so they can start spending that.
That's gonna like have plenty of time.
But, yeah. Well, and this is kind of the problem with this whole thing, and that's why we looked at it, Commissioner Ramos and I talked about going to that board to take it back over, is because of, things were happening and they were finding.
I thought you were going to give it away.
I tried that. I tried that, it just didn't seem to work, and so we were able to give it away, the operations of it, but somehow we retained the liability of it, and so we decided that since we still have the liability, we might as well take back the operations and have say-so in the operations piece, and be able to dictate, you know, how this bus system goes forward.
Frankly, the transit was in trouble.
I mean, we, money-wise, we're very in trouble. We were paying so much in workman's comp and so much in insurance, but now that it belongs to the county, we're saving a heck of a lot of money, being that it's been combined. Yeah, workman's comp will probably go from about $100,000 down to about $10,000, because it's part of our workman's comp now, and it's not on its own. Their liability insurance went down to nothing for this year, and next year we'll allocate a portion of our total cost to them, because we've already paid our premium, and they included the buses in, because we're halfway through.
So during next year's budget process, they'll be part of our budget at that time?
Well, they kind of are and they aren't, okay? They're in the budget, but their fiscal year, because they're on the federal dollars, they have to follow the federal fiscal year, that's October to September. So they're off different than us. They're, so when you approve the budget in July, they're still spending the last of their grant, and they don't get their stuff until closer to October for their new year. And so those agreements will come in front of you, and then we'll do budget adjustments, like when Linda does those budget revisions to the commission, that's revising our budget, because we've now got their new numbers that don't come into us until October.
And that's what we're doing first.
Is their budget. So it's a different, because they're on a different fiscal year, that's, it really, it's in there, but it's already the budget that they've been spending since October of the previous year, when you see it in July. It's one of those quirks of government.
These are some of those items that we never make money on, we're always in the hole in, but it's a service that really needs to be, needs to keep on the run.
To the shooting range.
And ridership is continuously going up, so that's good.
I'd like an update on numbers.
We can get that.
And maybe we can give you the rider list, I can ask him to bring that, ridership. Ridership has actually gone up.
It sure has.
In the last few years, they're, it's impressive on how many people are riding these.
Well, and it's impressive as to how many people are using for convenience.
Yes, yeah.
I think it's real close.
Which, when I was talking with her, the original, when Cory Camino started, or Cory Cantinas, the DWI put $30,000 in to buy the tickets to get that going, and the way the process is, is they pay them back with the revenues they get from selling tickets, and they pay back, I believe it's 26,000 of the 30,000 that's put into the program. So there's only 4,000 that's not recouped, which goes into the gas and things like that. So they do get a lot of riders on that program, and it's almost self-sustaining.
Yeah, and we've also talked about raising the rates and what have you, but the more you charge, the less you get on the grants, on the grant area, so then it defeats your purpose.
Yeah, there's the formulas and that.
Gotta get that happy medium there.
Right.
Yeah, it's similar to Terry's senior programs, is based on how his meals are going and everything's going, that fluctuates his price for the people that are non-seniors coming in to eat.
And just make sure that you never have them self-sustaining.
Yep.
Probably won't.
But we're better than most bus systems. I think in Carlsbad, they put in close to a million dollars a year into their bus system, Carlsbad and Eddie County, so.
Okay. All right, let's move into county reports, we'll start with the electeds. Go ahead, Captain. See, you're filling in for the sheriff this morning.
Sheriff could be here this morning, but right now, the sheriff's department is busy investigating a lot of auto burglaries within the county. And we're working with the, we're working with the PD to try and possibly nab the people that are involved in all the auto burglaries, and that's where we're at right now.
Kevin, I wanted to thank you for attending the neighborhood watch programs for Indian Hills. I think they appreciate you being there. I don't know that they had a great turnout last Saturday, but I thank you for attending those.
I've been at all of their meetings, and that was actually one of the higher turnouts they've had.
Good. Okay, Mr. Treasure?
Hi, Trevor and commissioners. In regards to the TRD and the DFA situation, there's still nothing we've accomplished there. They're just not budgeting as far as the partial payments. I've gotten with Mr. Gorman, and I know what's going on as far as that's concerned. The majority, I believe, is just gonna be legislative change that has to be done, and I know that our affiliate chair emailed everybody yesterday so that we could start working on that. Hopefully, with the midwinter conference, we can start putting some stuff together and make that changed, so that people that are on the delinquent list can continue to make partial payments. I had the tax revenue here in my office the last couple of weeks, letters have gone out, we've had a really good return, as I've known that earlier, but we've collected about $6,000, and that's all payment in full, and they have included some of the 12, so that's great. You know, some other areas have gone out as well to some of these taxpayers, we haven't heard back from them, because they've done eight and nines, but we've had a really good turnout. And some of them have been put onto what they call an installment agreement, but that is kind of a hardship, where they do have to fill out an application, where they have to have three credit denials, plus report all their liabilities and assets, and then they gotta send it to the state, and then the state determines what the payment is going to be, and they gotta fill up with 20% of what it is as well. So we're working on that, it's currently in good. So another thing is our bills, and I found out this morning, our bills for the taxes will be sent out on the 31st of this month, so they'll be going out, so we'll be really hitting it hard as soon as we can of next month, so. Do you have any other questions? That's all about your questions. Thank you.
Ms. Clerk, are you busy? Yes, sir, thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. We're very busy. We've issued out a total of 3,992 ballots, those are both to people that obviously have come into the office, such as Bear Community Center to vote, as well as people that we've mailed ballots to. Currently with those numbers, that leaves us at a 19% voter turnout already. It's quite good. We're getting quite a bit of phone calls, I guess in some states, they don't count their absentee ballots unless it's absolutely necessary, or it's a close race, but I want to assure people in the state of New Mexico, anytime you vote, the vote is counted regardless of when you cast your ballot. I've been getting a lot of phone calls, I guess, I don't wanna say which state it is, but they've had some problems in the past.
I'm Robert, California.
So they, it was news to me, I thought anytime you voted in the United States, your vote counted regardless, but apparently not. I do wanna reassure the citizens again that have been calling with that or have questions about that, when you cast your ballot in the state of New Mexico, the vote gets counted regardless of how close a race is, or how far the race is away from another. We've had a lot of concerns on the voting centers. We had about 4,000 voters that weren't able to vote in the primaries, because of course they aren't a Republican or a Democrat, so we have a few voters that didn't get that opportunity to see how they work. I just wanna reassure everybody that, you know, people are calling because they feel that there's only two centers in Silver City, but they have four other centers they can go to if those ones are full. At the main centers in Silver City, there's gonna be three ballot-on-demand systems in there, so in essence, there's really six places in Grant County that are giving out ballots. If you have any concerns that there may be something, you know, if you think there's gonna be a long line, don't wait till that date, come in and vote early. So there's a lot of individuals in here that have already voted early, they can attest to, it takes you longer to actually vote your ballot than it does to get your ballot from our system. So they're, you know, we're well prepared, the system isn't anything new that's been done, we've been doing the ballot-on-demand system in Grant County for how long?
I was saying 97.
So we've had a ballot-on-demand system in Grant County, although it was being used for early voting for all those years, it's something that we all have been accustomed to using already, if you've been an early voter. Another point of concern was, and I wanna thank John and Justin and the commission, when the convention center started its construction phase, these individuals made sure that for Election Day, we were gonna be able to use that place. There aren't any concerns, we're gonna be open, there'll be signs there letting you know that it will be open. All the steps have been taken care of. We've, you know, we're always a step ahead of the game, it's not something that our office goes in too blind, you know, we always think of the what-ifs, what if this happens, what if that happens, so we're always prepared. We have a good staff in there, they, they're always a step ahead of the game, and I wanna thank them. On Election Day, if you should happen to go to your polling place, you were normally accustomed to going to, there'll be signs there letting you know that you can go to a voting center. So there's a lot of things out there, there's a lot of things in place, that we're ready for this election. Our office is ready, and I want the citizens of Grant County to rest assured that this election will be handled just as every single election has in the past.
And real very, I'm sorry.
Real quickly, why don't you go over where they can vote early, and where the voting centers will be on Election Day?
Voting early is taking place in our office all this week, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. Next week in our office, Monday through Saturday, 8 to 5. Beginning, well, they started on Saturday at the Bear Community Center, but they'll be open Tuesday through Saturday this week, 9 to 6, and then the following week, Tuesday through Saturday, 9 to 6.
So the Monday prior to, there's no early voting then?
It all ends November 3rd. Early voting ends November 3rd, and our office and the Bear Community Center will be open on that Saturday for those last-minute early voters.
And then on Tuesday, where can they vote?
Tuesday, we have the voting community centers, we have one at Tyrone Community Center, one at the Women's Club, one at the Business and Conference Center, the National Guard Armory, Bear Community Center, and the Herdy Community Center. Now, our rural residents, people out there, like in the Kef area, Kef High School, the San Lorenzo area, the San Lorenzo High School, or the elementary school, I'm sorry, Sapiol Creek Fire Department will be having a polling location for those residents in that area. The PA Fire Department will be one, and of course, Mule Creek and Hachita will have those. Those individuals, if they happen to be in town, we're more than happy to have them vote at a convenient center. Unfortunately, for those of us that live in town, we can't necessarily drive out to Kef and vote out there, our names won't be on those lists. So those are the, that's the difference, is those areas are specific to those residents that are out there, that way they don't have to drive into town to use our convenient centers, they still have their normal polling location as always.
Thanks, Ramon.
I just wanted to compliment your office, Robert, and your staff for, this voting is very, very efficient, and.
Thank you.
Admiring voting last week, and it was brief.
Well, and being a past county clerk, I think this is just gonna be so convenient for the people, it's.
for the people, it's, it's, uh, it's really nice to be able to go vote while you're running around, no matter where you're at, if you gotta run to Hurley, you can even stop there if the lines are short, it's gonna be very convenient for everyone, so, I'd like to, uh, congratulate you for bringing that system into Grant County. Thank you, Chairman, or thank you Commissioners, um, I, I just did wanna point out, as the cost of the systems come down or level off, of course, Grant County will be able to increase the amount of voter centers out that are out there right now, but because this is something new, Bernaleo County's using it, Dona, you know, a lot of counties are using it, so, you know, the simple laws of supply and demand apply to this, so, you know, once it levels off, the prices will come down, Grant County will be able to increase, you know, supporting locations, granted that we can find some, some good locations that are accessible for handicap, you know, and things of that nature that have internet, uh, secure wireless that we need, so, you know, it, it, this is just for this election, but I can, you know, assure the citizens of Grant County that this election, you know, our office is ready for it.
Thanks. Okay, anything else for Rob? Then we'll move on to Directors, Terry, you wanna go first?
Uh, I'd like to take, uh, to thank Justin and his staff for, um, yeah, I'd like to thank Justin and his staff for working with our staff, we've done some, um, in the last month, we've done some major improvements, uh, to a couple of our centers, so, uh, and we're looking to do, uh, some more major improvements probably within the next six months to three of our other centers, so, this is gonna make, I think, in the long run, easier for his staff where they don't have to drive out to Mimbres or Hila, um, hopefully, and, uh, give him more time to do whatever else he has to do, and so, other than that, I, I don't have anything, unless you have questions.
I could have a question for Terry. Um, Terry, what's going on, an update on the Volunteer Center and the Mimbres Senior Centers, where are we at with that?
Uh, Alicia and, um, one of her staff were out there on Thursday of last week, and it was basically, uh, question and answer between them and, and the citizens, uh, citizens out there as to what, what they wanted, and so, she took notes, and I guess she's gonna try and develop a plan, and, uh, and as far as I know, that's, that's as far as it's gone.
Excellent.
Yeah, and that, that contract's been signed by everybody.
Oh, good, okay.
Any other questions for Terry?
Yep.
Okay, Justin?
Commissioner, Chairman, Captain, Commissioners, uh, Terry, Salvi, I've been really busy with the Senior Centers, um, asked down in Mimbres, um, in the process right now, we're getting some quotes for a new HVAC unit to get installed there, um, I do have the guys down there meeting with Sunrais right now as we speak, we're also gonna be doing, uh, getting a quote for another HVAC unit, put it in Hila, um, they're the last two units, the last two centers that, um, don't have HVACs, they do have, uh, swamp coolers, so we're gonna eliminate the swamp coolers and go to HVACs, it's, uh, the money's gonna be coming out of some of the grants that Terry's received through the long, the long-term we do services. Also, um, down in Mimbres, I did have to install a new well, water well, uh, the casing on the old one was deteriorated and rotted, so we were in the process of trying to replace that, during the process, the contractor, um, about 50 feet down, it collapsed on the well, so we had to go to, had to go down to Dimey to get a new permit, uh, we did get the new well dug, it's, it's up and running as we speak, um, I'd like to thank the Mimbres Methodist Church for supplying us water, they allowed us to run a hose from their center to our center to, to have water for the facility during the time that we were without water, um, so, um, I did speak with them, and I would like to try to see if we could reimburse for whatever cost that we did occur with the water and electricity that we did, that we ran out for that, so, also, uh, in Santa Clara, we did do, uh, remodeling to the restrooms, we made them handicap accessible, the doors, uh, we redid all the painting in the kitchen area, I did install the, uh, we did install a double oven that got installed last week, uh, the plumber will be there today to install the gas to get that connected, um, also, I'm gonna be purchasing some gravel for the rear of that building, 'cause it does get really muddy during the winter, and that's where they do, when they do dump the dumpsters and everything, they do go through the rear to get access to that. Um, at the Silver Senior Center, we've been doing a lot of work there also, I did, uh, purchase another double oven for the Silver Senior Center, um, also in the process of getting quotes to do a remodeling of their kitchen area, which is cabinets, flooring, um, just, a lot of, they need a lot of work in that kitchen, um, all this funding is coming out of the, the grants that we did receive, so it's, it's at no cost to the county. Um, and, um, also, what we've been doing is we've been working out in Fort Baird, doing a lot of the weeds, we cut up on all the weeds that were, you know, for issue out there, uh, we do have the Fall Baseball League that plays on Sundays there, along with, um, the girls, Fall, the Fall League for the girls, I believe, but they're out there also on Saturdays and Sundays, I believe. Um, as for the shooting range, where I'm, I'm looking at trying to purchase an additional speaker for the PA system, we, we did have a request from Herb Trail and the Shooting Range Committee, um, I guess on the pistol range, they can't hear when they're talking on the PA system from that one that we do have there, so, I'm looking at trying to get an additional speaker and, and, and install over there by the pistol range. Um, more thoroughly, we did get that other piece of equipment, did, we got that put in, we did install a new shade structure with the roof, the cement, uh, we did fix the drainage, we did, we did the sidewalk out there, uh, put a culvert under it, and put some riprap rock around it so with the, no water on being contained in that one area that we had seen out there. Um, just winterizing all the units, uh, all the facilities, we're draining all the swamp coolers, you know, getting everything ready for the winter, so, and that's, that's been out there for, we need to do, um, out there in Cliff, for the fairground building we need to do, we're doing our own office, we've also done a lot of the other centers that we had to do. Um, also, this Friday, we do have a, have a pre-paving meeting with Southwest Concrete for the airport, for the apron, they're getting ready to start the paving out there, so Friday, I do have a meeting with W.A. Pacific and Southwest Concrete to see if they're gonna get started on that paving for the, and also, we did install carpet in the Treasurer's office and in the Assessor's office, uh, within the last month, so there, uh, pretty much the whole building's got new carpet except for the Public Works Office. But, uh, so everybody else is pretty much taken care of, yeah, so we did get that finished up, it was a lot of furniture we had to move on Alfred's office and Randy's, uh, Randy had a lot of stuff, so, um, besides that, we did do some paint, I put new paint in the Health Office, it was like about a month and a half ago, so we repainted the whole front of the, inside of the interior for the Health Office, so they've, we got them fixed up. And we've been pretty, really busy, you know, the guys have been working really hard, um, I appreciate my staff, everybody does their, what they need to do, I had Tisha working with the facility, do, um, with, uh, the house offer that John did purchase, and she's been working on that, so we've, office has been really busy, um, besides that, that's pretty much it. Um, besides that, that's pretty much it.
Um, Justin, is the Hammond's thing going, going done?
Oh, yeah. That one's been done for a while.
Can I put them by there?
It's nice.
Yeah.
Goodbye. You don't have much to do.
Yeah.
See, that big deal is possible.
Um, you know what? I did, I did touch, uh, talk with WH Pacific about it, you know, to give me some kind of ideas, because I do that kind of drainage, and he was going to give me some kind of paperwork and something, some kind of ideas of where we could try to stop the drainage from going down to that bottom field. It's something I have addressed, the Whittaker Bridge Pacific to maybe look at it for us and see what kind of, the cost and what we're looking at, trying to get that done.
Also start looking at an area for batting cages for each field.
Okay.
You know, hopefully that'll help with the fencing. I, I see the fences starting to work where people are hitting the ball into the fence, so I'm sure that'll help out.
Okay. Thank you.
Earl? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, we went down to Hatchita and we redid the approach ramp going to that dumpster. Uh, we've made it where they, we tore down the old one and we've made it where they can drive up any way they want to drive up on that thing, so. And I haven't heard anything bad about it, so hopefully it's working and everybody's happy down there. We did clean up the yard, the yard was kind of a mess down there, but we got it all cleaned up, cut all the trees and bushes out and fenced away from it when it got tore down. We did completely finish the rack project up there on the Sacatone Road, all the paperwork's been turned in and just waiting on the reimbursement check from, from the Forest Service on it. Uh, we did go over to Baird and they ended up chip sealing about twenty streets this year, and we got, got that all chip sealed and waited a couple of weeks and we went over there and got it all fog sealed. Um, hopefully Christie's happy, she says, I'll see you next year, so. Uh, we're still doing our routine patching, trying to get everything out of town done before it gets too cold where we can't hold hot mix that far, but, and I think we're about got caught up on it. We're working on some drainage on the north end of Little Wall, installing some culverts and stuff up there. We had it engineered, there's been a drainage problem up there for years, and we had it engineered. It was incorporated with our LGF project, but unfortunately since the wall was so high this year, we weren't, we couldn't afford to do it with the LGF money, so I'm doing it on my own budget. But I bought the pipe and all the materials out of the LGRF for, uh, I've met with Ty Bates and the Forest Service, uh, we went out and looked at, uh, met with a bunch of residents out there at the homestead, and I have talked with both of them and working on trying to establish a borrow pit out there at the homestead to start widening the road out there and filling in the barges on there. I'm hoping, uh, Ty Bates with Freeport Macran will come up with something and that will eliminate a lot of paperwork going through the Forest Service and get it done quicker on there, so I'm waiting to hear back from him. Uh, on the downside, we're starting to have a lot of fuel theft again right now. Uh, we've had a blade getting, got, uh, some damage done with some stealing fuel out of it. Uh, Buddy's truck from the Humane Society, they cut his fuel line, stealing fuel out of his pickup, or mower was parked over on Rosedale Road over the weekend at the fire station, and they probably stole a hundred gallons of fuel out of there, but did twelve hundred dollars worth of damage to the machine trying to get the fuel out on the thing, so we're looking at more secure ways. You would think that the Forest Service, uh, the blade that, uh, was broken into, was parked on Archer right on Cottage Town Road, there's high volume traffic on there, but apparently nobody's seeing anything or, but we are having problems with fuel again, with the price of fuel in Grant County the way it is on there. And like I said, the, the biggest problem is it's not so much that we're losing the fuel, but they're doing a lot of damage to get to the fuel there, so.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for getting down there to Hatchita and getting that fixed. I, I haven't heard anything about how nice it is, but I, I heard a lot about how bad it was prior to.
Yeah.
So. Any questions for Earl? I know you've been out to a couple subdivisions, done some assessments too, and we're working on those as we speak to get those done, so.
Right. I would like to say, just kind of like Justin, the, the road department's done a tremendous amount of work this year. I mean, we've been busier this year, this late in the year than we've ever been. Uh, I was looking when I was signing payroll, I've got guys that's had more hours than they've ever had since they've been working there because they haven't, they haven't been able to get off work. Now that it's hunting season, they're finally getting to take some time off, but I would like to really thank my staff and, and my employees, they've, they've really done a great, great job this year on there.
And we appreciate your staff and, and all of you.
Well, I work for the chairman.
Yep. Okay. It's, uh, John?
Um, I just wanted to bring up the Duck Creek Road. We had some residents come in and talk to us, and I spoke with Earl a little bit and Anthony. Um, just, they want us to look at some certain issues. They've got spots where the road is a fine, kind of a clay material, um, that we're looking at with the redoing the fair barn area, we're going to have to bring in some material, and there's a place that we own land there that we may speak with Mr. Fowler, who we have a contract with, to move his portable crusher and crush some material for us, and we'll be able to use that material to plate these areas, uh, to help knock down that dust. They brought me a jar of it in my office, and everybody thinks it's hot chocolate because it's such a fine powder. And, and so we're working on that. Um, I've got to send them back an email. They sent an email to Commissioner Miller and myself about it, so I got to respond to them, just let them know, you know, we're looking at it. We haven't forgot, we're just trying to get some material in that area, kind of as Earl spoke about it, that borrow pit he's trying to get. It's hard to get material around, so we look for areas close where we can, we can borrow material from because the cost of fuel, it makes projects to where we spend all our money in fuel that trying to get material out there, and we can't do a lot. So, we're trying to make our money go further by having our pits everywhere, and with our contract we have with Mr. Fowler, uh, we have that ability to move his portable crusher and have him crush materials for us at a lower cost than us buying them from a vendor. Um, so that's what we're looking at doing is we've got some property by the fairground, basically across the street from that road, so we'll be able to crush material and have it there for Earl to use and for us to use when we fill in that hole where we're going to redo that, uh, barn at the fairgrounds. Um, I'm going to be attending a multi-line insurance meeting that's this afternoon in Cruzus and tomorrow morning, and then I'll be back tomorrow afternoon and be here for the commission meeting on Thursday. Um, so that's for our insurance, uh, represents seventeen of the thirty-three counties on that board, so we'll be attending that. Um, and then just kind of everybody's working. We're, we're trying to get, um, everything accomplished. I spoke with the auditor Friday, and, um, he came in and got a copy of a main statement that he needed, that he said was the last piece he needed to finish the audit so he can send it up and start the new audits, so I think we're getting close to having it sent up again. Um, he had, Steve had come in, the Deputy Treasurer, had come in and gotten all these, and we sent them over to their office and they sent them all back, and then he called and said, hey, do you have those, those, those statements? And I said, yeah. And he goes, all right, I need one. We didn't make copies, and that's all we need left, so we're, I think we're there. I don't think they need anything else from the treasurer's office. I think we finally, they've got everything they need to finish that, the ten, and then they'll, said it's a couple of weeks for the eleven, and then they'll be on to the twelve. Um, I reiterated to them that our need for, we're trying to go for capital outlay for the fair building, and we've been told by legislators and we've been told by everybody, we won't get CBG, we won't get capital outlay, we won't get any funding unless those audits are in. And so, we're now getting to a point where we're, we've got possibly millions of dollars on the line that we could lose, uh, if our audits aren't finished and sent up there. So, he's, he's working on them. He told me he's not going on vacation, he's not going anywhere until they're all done.
Because that's really going to affect us, it's going to affect the county.
You know, well, we've been pushing this since we've been in office. This is just ridiculous already. I think we need to get a, a letter sent out to him, um, with all our signatures on it, and telling him, you know, we, we need to get this done by November fifteenth. Um, it's, it's, it's an embarrassment, it really is an embarrassment as a commissioner that we do not have these audits.
Especially when there's money at stake with all of this, and that hurts Grant County projects and what our residents need.
Yeah, so, so.
You know, this should be top priority on the, on the, uh, on his list.
Yeah, and that's what he told me, like I said, Friday, is that this is his priority and he's not taking any vacation or going anywhere until he's done with it, so. But, but we will put something together. I'll get with Dave and we can look at drafting something. Um, so, uh, and then that's really, you know, just business as usual.
I would also like to see him on the next agenda, not, not for Thursday, but the following, to see where we're at.
Okay. I'll talk with him, there's, he can't say.
At the meeting here, the seventh, what is our next?
Um, the work session, wait, that would be on the sixth.
The work session on the sixth would be fine.
Okay. And, and I'll ask him, there's, there's certain things he can say and can't say because of the state laws and the audit rule, but we'll ask him.
But we need to basically see where we're at, because we need.
The only thing to say is that it's him.
Yeah.
I think that's what we need to put this pressure.
So, we'll be doing that. Um, the conference center remodel is going on. Um, Kevin Robinson's been doing a great job as the administrator and architect on the project for us. Um, he's been working with, um, the contractor, TA Colt, to help minimize the impact to our tenant Ace Hardware, so they were able to come up with, originally, the way the design went, uh, they were going to have to impact inside the store in Ace to replace the ductwork for the new heating and air conditioning system, and so it'd impact for several weeks different aisles, sections of the store. We would have to close down so that people wouldn't get hurt. Um, Kevin talked with, uh, Brian Fuller, and they talked with the contractor and the sub about changing the, um, way that the air conditioners are set on the roof, the collars on them, and so they came up with a new collar design that will cause us to not go into the store and impact it at all, and there was no additional costs on the project. It was done for the same amount of money. Um, and so, he's been able to get us to where we're not inside the store doing the work on this, so it really took a lot of impact away from Ace Hardware by doing that, so he's really been diligent on trying to make sure that we don't, um, impact the tenant because we know he's, he needs customers to make money, and that's his livelihood, and we're just trying to make a better facility for everybody. And so, they've been doing a great job over there. As far as I know, the project's on schedule. Um, they're looking at trying to finish up in March next year. We gave him three hundred and sixty-five days, he said he's not going to need it, so he's saying it's a March or April timeframe that he should be done. Um, so, and, and he's worked with us, like I said, on Rob's Voting Center, um, and that's, we've, we've added one to Rob's What If list, is what if the manager remodels our voting center in the middle of an election? So, one more thing he has to worry about every time he gets ready for voting, like he didn't worry about enough, um, and so that's, but it's worked out really good. Everybody's working together on that project and it's going really well. Uh, and as soon as we get done, we'll go after funding for the additional monies, try and get the additional monies to remodel the inside, uh, so, but that's basically where we're at.
Um, I'd like to have the, um, people that are part of the education program at the detention center on the next agenda as well, John, to give us an update as to how that's going.
The volunteers?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
And then one other thing, um, where are we at this point with the essential air services?
Um, the essential air services, I gave you all copies of the letter and spoke with you. We've sent our letter back by the deadline was October tenth to send that back to them. Um, we haven't gotten anything back yet that they've done the final award. Um, the recommendation was Great Lakes because they were the only one that met the, uh, minimum criteria of the order, of having the twin engine with the two pilots and a pressurized cabin, and the recommendation was the two round trips a day to Phoenix. Um, the, as far as I know, it's going forward, like I said, currently they are flying to Phoenix, but they're still going into Albuquerque. Um, as soon as we get the award, then that will change, uh, but we haven't got it from the Federal Department of Transportation, Mr. Devaney.
I think Mayor Marshall brought up the fact that there's cancellations on and off because of mechanical issues.
Yes, um, and, and the way this is structured, um, the chairman, uh, on the conference calls we had with Great Lakes before the award was done and before the letter was sent, um, the reason why we kind of changed things, when they came and did their presentation here, they talked about overnighting in Silver City. Well, that's the reason for the cancellations is the overnighting in Clovis and would be in Silver City is because you have one plane, and if you go to get in that plane and it doesn't start, then the flights have to be canceled. If they originate their flights out of Phoenix, then they have a fleet of planes there, so if the plane that's designated to come to Silver City doesn't start, they just go get another plane and they start it up and they come down, and so the flight doesn't have to be canceled, possibly doesn't even have to be delayed because they start doing their checks well before the time the plane has to take off. So, it, it should eliminate, um, the majority of the cancellations. There has been some cancellations due to weather, and there's nothing Great Lakes or any of us can do about that, um, but there should eliminate the mechanical cancellations that have happened in the past by them coming out of Phoenix, driving, fly to Silver, turn around and go right back to Phoenix, and then in the evening come back from Phoenix to Silver and back.
Yeah, because there was a cancellation about two weeks ago due to the.
Yes, and it was because the flight never left Clovis, because currently what's happening is the flight goes Clovis to Albuquerque, Albuquerque to Silver City, Silver City to Phoenix, and then it turns around and goes Phoenix to Silver, Silver to Albuquerque, Albuquerque back to Clovis. The flight never left Clovis, and so it got canceled.
It was actually the day of our conference call.
Yeah.
And it was happening.
And we brought it up, and we brought it up, and the CEO hadn't even heard about it yet, and we had heard about it, uh, from a resident, and, so we brought it up to them and, and they were looking into it, but that was the issue, is it, it, it didn't start in Clovis that morning, or there was a part that needed to be done, and or something happened, so there was no other plane to come down. So, this should eliminate a lot of those issues. Um, and then we're still continuing, we've talked with the Town and Service City about continuing to talk with, um, possibly talk with Seaport Air, that was the other place that put in, or, uh, Mr. Frost, we spoke with him a little bit, about trying to get some kind of service going to either Albuquerque or Santa Fe, a smaller service, um, that doesn't have subsidy. Uh, so, uh, probably go into Santa Fe is what we'll have to do because of the regulations, you can't hit two hubs with essential air service, and so if we're hitting Phoenix, I don't think we can hit Albuquerque, but Santa Fe's not considered a hub, so we could hit Santa Fe, uh, and not violate anything.
That's all I have.
Commissioner?
No. Just, uh, thanks for preparing those bills. It's really, really looking good out there. It's real nice to see so many people out there on Sunday. Um, makes it all well, well worth it, but I think that's pretty much all I've got.
Okay. Um, I've met with, John and I've met with the fair board and, uh, the county people twice now. Uh, we're getting very close to, um, the building we're going to need and where it's going to be out there. Probably one more meeting and we will have that pretty secured. Probably at the next meeting, we'll have to, uh, have the, have the bid out for the demolition of the current building. Um, meeting dates, since we're getting into holiday time, in November, we'll have a work session on the sixth, a meeting on the eighth, but the next set of meetings sets up to be on Thanksgiving, so it won't happen. Then, once again, in, uh, December, work session on the eleventh, meeting on the thirteenth, so the next meetings would be during Christmas, so we probably won't have those unless we have to have some type of emergency at the end of the year meeting, so that will be our regular meetings. Is that all right with everybody?
All right.
Okay. Um.
Session starts.
January fifteenth is the sixty-day session.
Yeah, and that's, bring up, the one thing we're researching, and I'll bring some more information to the commission by the next meeting, is, um, with it being a sixty-day session and with as much kind of publicity that's going on right now, I, I think it's going to be vital that all counties and municipalities, I think, have some kind of, uh, presence, whether it be through a lobbyist or, or sending staff up there, uh, because I think this is going to be a really tough session where it's not going to be money thrown around, it's going to be different policies that are going to affect us, um, our bottom line. Um, and so, what I've been doing is doing some research on if we were to rent a place compared to paying a bunch of hotel rooms where we would have the ability to have a couple people stay in the same, um, house, what we're looking at, what we've literally been finding, I'm still doing some research, is it's about eighteen hundred to twenty-two hundred, twenty-five hundred, I think was the highest one, a month to rent a place. Um, when you look at the first couple of weeks, um, where they're, the chairman and I, last year, were there for nine days, uh, the first two weeks of the session, as well as Commissioner Miller was there for those nine days too, I believe. Um, you're, with two people, if you had a place that two people could stay, you've spent eighteen hundred dollars in nine days for two people, uh, which pays for the rent for the whole place, so we're looking at, um, different scenarios if we were to rent a place, like I said, or if we were able to rent a larger hotel room. Uh, one time, myself and Commissioner Ramos and Commissioner Keston went up and we were able to rent a larger room that all three of us were able to stay in, it had two bedrooms and a sofa sleeper, and I think it was only a hundred and thirty dollars instead of a hundred dollars each, so.
Now, if I were going to be a commissioner, that wouldn't work out for me.
No, it wouldn't.
Own bedroom?
Yeah. You could have your own, uh, you could go alone, um, and, and probably that's what'll happen, is it probably won't be two people going all the time, but you want to have a place that if you needed to send more people, there would be room, um, if the treasurer needed to go and, and as he says, they're working on doing a lot with TRD this year, and if they need to go, it'd be a place where we would be able to go real quick and, and not have to pay a lot and be able to have some food, so you don't have to eat out all the time and things like that, so. We're looking at some different, and I'll present them to you, uh, probably at the sixth meeting to show you what we've got and what we've looked at before we do anything, um, because I want to get with a couple of the hotels that have some larger rooms in them